Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Committee on Civil Service and Labor, joint with Women and Gender Equity. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices and at no time are you to approach the dais. If you have any questions throughout the hearing or would like to sign up for in-person testimony, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms chairs. We're ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to today's hearing of the New York City Council's Committee on Civil Service and Labor. I'm Councilmember Carmen de la Rosa, Chair of the Committee. Today's hearing is focused on equitable representation in the city's workforce, a critical issue that speaks to the values of fairness, opportunity, inclusion in public service. We will be hearing the following legislative items. Intro 675, sponsored by myself, in relation to the establishment of a task force to study the gender pay disparity and economic self-sufficiency among the labor force in the city. Reso 66, sponsored by Councilmember Caban, expressing solidarity with unionization drives across New York City's workforce and affirming the right to have union elections free from anti-democratic union busting practices. Reso 109, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, calling on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign the New York City Telework Expansion Act. And Reso 368, sponsored by Councilmember Shahana Hanif, calling on the United States Congress to pass and the president to sign the Living Wage for Musicians Act. At a time when the federal government is rolling back critical civil rights protections, targeting DEI programs, gutting support for inclusive education, and weakening enforcement of anti-discrimination laws, New York City must stand firm in its values. We reject the premise that equity initiatives are antithetical to merit. We know that DEI efforts are not about preference. They are about removing barriers that have long denied qualified people opportunities because of who they are. Our nation has a deep and painful history of segregation and exclusion rooted in racist laws and gender bias. Today, those legacies are still evident in persistent wage gaps. In 2024, women nationally earn just eighty-five cents to every dollar earned by men. The numbers are even more sobering for women of color. Asian women earn seventy-two cents, black women earn fifty-seven cents, Latina women earn fifty-four cents, and Native American women only earn fifty-five cents. Here in New York City, where women in municipal jobs still make just eighty-seven cents on the dollar compared to men in the same roles, we must acknowledge that our work is far from finished. The latest underutilization analysis from the Equal Employment Practices Commission reinforces this point. Despite ongoing efforts underutilization of black, Asian, and female workers remains a persistent challenge across city agencies. In 2024, there were two-hundred-and-twenty-three instances of underutilization, a slight increase from the previous year. Black employees remain the most underutilized group, particularly in job titles like managers, detectives, and skilled trades, positions that offer higher-than-average salaries and long-term career growth. Women continue to face steep disparities in fields like law enforcement and the trades. Just as concerning are the high departure rates among black employees and women workers who are leaving city service at rates disproportionate to their presence in the workforce. At this committee, as this committee has reiterated time and again, it is not just about recruitment, it is about retention. Exit interviews, career counseling, and performance evaluations are tools that can make a difference. But they must be scaled and coordinated across the system to work. We need a strategy that supports city employees throughout their careers and not just at the point of hire. In today's political climate, maintaining and strengthening DEI efforts is not only a moral imperative, it is a workforce necessity. Research shows that organizations with strong equity practices see better retention, improved employment engagement, and stronger organizational performance. As a city that employs over three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand public servants, our ability to recruit and retain top talent depends on our commitment to equity. This council is committed to ensuring that every city agency is not only complying with the letter of our civil rights laws, but also embodying their spirit. This means building a workforce that reflects the diversity of our city, values every employee, and breaks down the structural barriers that continue to hold talented people back. I'd like to thank the committee staff for their hard work in preparing for this hearing, Senior Policy Analyst Elizabeth Arts, Senior Legislative Counsel Rhea Osawara. I'd also like to thank my staff, Chief of Staff James Burke, Deputy Chief of Staff Kiana Diaz, and Communications Director Frey Familia. I would like to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmembers Caban, Councilmember Salam, Councilmember Moyan Zoom, Councilmember Bacher, Councilmember Hanks, and of course, our co-chair today, Councilmember Lewis. I now turn to Chair Lewis for her opening statement.
Thank you, Chair de la Rosa, and good morning, everyone. My name is Farah Lewis and I'm the Chair of the Committee on Women and Gender Equity. Thank you all for joining us for this very important hearing today on equitable representation in the municipal workforce. I would like to take a moment to thank Chair de la Rosa for the opportunity to co-chair this crucial hearing and for her staunch advocacy to combat occupational segregation and fighting for equitable representation in the municipal workforce. I would also like to welcome everyone that has joined us today, both in person and virtual, for this hearing on oversight, equitable representation in the city workforce. Additionally, I look forward to hearing the legislation Chair de la Rosa mentioned. Introduction number 675 of 2024, sponsored by Councilmember de la Rosa. Resolution number 662024, sponsored by Councilmember Caban. Resolutions numbers 1092024, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson. And Resolution number 3682024, sponsored by Councilmember Hanif. I am proud to be a co-sponsor of these pieces of legislation. Recently, the current federal administration has taken several measures to reduce the promotion of diversity and equity in the federal workforce, claiming without evidence that DEI initiatives discourage merit-based hiring. These actions compound ongoing historical practices of occupational segregation and discriminatory practices, and we have a moral obligation to address this issue. At the city level, the city council continues to strive forward, improving equity in the workforce, and today, we continue that fight. This hearing will focus on the importance and value of fostering the inclusion in the workforce, providing opportunities to workers from historically marginalized groups, improving culturally humility, and hone in on key metrics that show that New York City benefits from the collaborative work from employees across all races, ethnicities, genders, and religions. We look forward to hearing the response from our city agencies on these issues, as well as hearing from members of the public, advocates, and other interested stakeholders, including those with lived experience who have taken the time to come here today to join us. It is imperative we hear from your voices and your advocacy, and we thank you all for your support. Finally, I would like to thank my own staff, as well as Committee Council staff members who worked so hard to prepare this hearing. Senior Legislative Counsel Julia Goldsmith-Pinkham, Senior Legislative Policy Analyst Kristi Dreyer, and our Finance Analyst, Ally Stouffer. I will now pass it back to Chair de la Rosa.
Thank you, Chair Lewis. I now turn to Councilmember Caban for her opening statement on her resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning. Excuse me. I want to thank Chairs de la Rosa and Lewis for the opportunity to speak about Reso 66, expressing solidarity with unionization drives across New York City's workforce and affirming the right to have union elections free from anti-democratic union busting practices. With the Trump administration attacking workers and unleashing anti-union billionaires like Elon Musk to dismantle the National Labor Relations Board and perhaps attack the NLRA itself, it has never been more important for the city to reassert our commitment to all workers having the right to organize, to unionize, and to bargain collectively without intimidation, retaliation, or obstruction. From the fight for the forty-hour work week and minimum wages to the establishment of child labor laws and workplace safety standards, the labor movement has always played a central role in the struggle for justice and fairness for working people in this country. But despite this, and even in the face of overwhelming public support for unions, too many workers are met with union busting campaigns, disinformation, and scare tactics when they try to exercise their rights. Captive audience meetings, surveillance, retaliation, and the use of high-priced anti-union consultants are all too common. These undemocratic and often illegal practices are an assault on our basic democratic values, and now they are being backed up by the union buster-in-chief in the White House. This resolution is a statement of our core beliefs, that New York City supports the workers who make this city run, and that we will not stand by as their rights are trampled by corporate money and fascists in Washington, DC. As someone who comes from a working-class, union family in Queens, I know how important these rights are to every New Yorker. I urge you to join me in supporting this resolution and showing our solidarity with our siblings in the labor movement. So, thank you, Chairs.
Thank you, Councilmember Caban. Unfortunately, Councilmember Hanif is unable to join today's hearing, so I am going to read her opening statement on her behalf. Good morning. I am Councilmember Shahana Hanif. Thank you, Chair de la Rosa, Chair Lewis, for holding this important hearing, including Resolution 348 on today's agenda. I'd also like to thank Councilmembers Osei Rivera, Menon, and Caban for introducing this resolution alongside me. Most of us, myself included, use streaming platforms as our primary way of listening to music. The songs that we stream, soundtracks in our commutes, our workouts, and our quality time with our friends. But the popularity of music streaming platforms has not benefited the artists that make songs we listen to. Currently, the average recording artist receives less than a third of the penny when someone streams their song on Spotify. These low rates of pay make it incredibly difficult for musicians to eke out a living. We all know that New York City makes the best music in the entire world. If we want to keep it that way, we have to make sure musicians can make enough money to live here. The Living Wage for Musicians Act, which Representative Talib has introduced with the support of the United Musicians and the Allied Workers, would do this by requiring streaming companies to pay into a nonprofit fund through which artists could be paid at least one penny per stream. This would be a game changer for New York City musicians and keeps our city and the music capital of the world. I encourage my colleagues to sign on and sponsor, and I thank the members of the public here today to testify in support of this resolution. We will now hear testimony from representatives of DCAST, OLR, and CGE. I now turn to the Committee Council to administer the panel. For this panel, we will have Katrina Porter, Katie Anotar, Sylvia Montabon, Daniel Pollak, and Matthew Graham. If you could please come up to the dais.
We will now hear testimony from the administration. Before we begin, I will administer the affirmation. Panelists, please raise your right hand, and I will read the affirmation once and then call on each of you individually to respond. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
I do.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Good morning, Chairs de la Rosa, Williams, and members of the committees. My name is Katrina Porter, and I am the Chief Human Capital Officer for the City of New York and Deputy Commissioner of Human Capital at the Department of Citywide Administrative Services. Today, I am joined here by my colleagues, Assistant Commissioner of Workforce Operations, Katie Anotar, Sylvia Montabon, OLR, and the Committee on Gender and Equity. Before I begin, I want the record to reflect that DCAST has submitted a long form of the testimony, but we'll be reading a truncated version today. Equity in the workforce is more than a goal, but an absolute critical mission, and I am proud to help lead this effort in city government. At DCAST, we remain invested in creating pipelines for people from all backgrounds to grow into good-paying careers as part of the city's workforce. It is how we ensure our government reflects the diversity of nearly eight-point-five million people we serve. As we continue to focus on strengthening our workforce, increasing diversity, and creating new opportunities, we are also cognizant of the challenges posed by historic and systematic inequities as they relate to occupational segregation and pay equity. Our first line of defense has been and will continue to be our civil service system. By design, it prioritizes merit and fitness and helps mitigate issues with pay inequity. Furthermore, the salaries for the vast majority of employees are set through collective bargaining between the city, represented by the Office of Labor Relations and unions representing our city workers. This ensures our employees themselves have a seat at the table through their union representatives. But we know that there is still more to be done, and we are using data to build out an apples-to-apples comparison to better understand where we stand in relation to other sectors. When evaluating the city's workforce, DCAST looks at the entire agency population, which includes the Department of Education and the Health and Hospitals Corporation, which together account for nearly one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand city employees, or a little more than half of the city's workforce. In our forthcoming fiscal year 2024 Workforce Profile Report, we detail that with the inclusion of DOE and H&amp;H overall, the city's wage gap decreases to ninety-one cents on the dollar. According to recent data from the Pew Research Center, nationally, women earn eighty-five cents for every dollar. And with that, the City of New York is outperforming national averages. Despite the progress in pay equity, occupational segregation continues to be a cause of income inequalities and has remained persistent and prevalent in the job market. Given the gravity of this issue, we continue to prioritize and analyze pay structures to help inform critical policies that can further address pay inequity. As mandated in Local Law 27, we are advancing our plan to work with a vendor to conduct a pay equity analysis across sixty titles. While the initial selection took longer than we expected, we have identified a vendor to support us in this work and are nearing the completion of the contract. We look forward to seeing the results of this analysis and sharing them with the council and New Yorkers. Core to building equity is the development and steady flow of candidates through multiple recruitment pipelines. With this in mind, we continue to focus on creating opportunities and sharing resources for those interested in municipal employment through DCAST's Workforce Operations Team. They carry out essential functions and bolster recruitment through engagement and education. The team provides targeted, data-driven solutions aimed at addressing recruitment challenges on behalf of the city. Within Workforce Operations, we house the Office of Citywide Recruitment and the Pathway Program. OCR focuses on building relationships, advising, developing, and executing large-scale recruitment strategies and providing information to historically underserved communities that are underrepresented in city government. In conjunction with OCR, the Pathway Program features several opportunities for people to join the municipal workforce. These include the Civil Service Pathway Fellowship, a DCAST-City-of-New-York partnership that provides recent CUNY graduates with a two-year fellowship and a pathway to permanent civil service employment. Public Service Corps, which engages current college students interested in gaining government experience. Urban Fellows, a competitive program that provides opportunities in all facets of city government. And our Summer Internship Program, which is geared towards college students looking for temporary employment. We have also implemented new forward-thinking approaches to expand opportunities, including administering the first-ever Public Safety Bridge Exam, encompassing a multitude of titles with one exam, and reforming the city's minimum qualification requirements for civil service titles. To date, DCAST has completed the review of ninety civil service titles, and of these, sixty-one have been revised. These revisions impact fifty-three-thousand-plus jobs and expand qualification requirements, which were previously restrictive and difficult for many applicants to meet. Our efforts aren't just limited to recruitment, as we recognize retention and professional development are equally as important. Other efforts undertaken by DCAST include the Salary Benchmarking Tool, which provides agencies with minimum, mean, median, and maximum salary information at the agency and civil service title level, aggregated from employee-level data, and compares the salary information against other agencies of similar size, function, and citywide. NY City Learn, our new learning and management system, launched last September, which increases access to training and professional development opportunities and resources. The New York City Management Academy equips mid-level managers and emerging leaders with grounding and fundamental management principles and best practices to meet the unique demands of managing and city government and provides access to more senior-level positions. This is just a small sampling of the city's efforts to increase retention and foster increased professional development opportunities, which supplement our additional work like career counseling, our training expos, expanding resources for agencies, and of course, partnering with our sister agencies to increase employee benefits. Regarding the proposed legislation, while we appreciate the council's continued work to address the gender pay disparity, we respectfully do not support Intro 675 as it duplicates work already underway by the administration to address this matter. In close coordination and collaboration with the Commission on Gender Equity and through the Pay Equity Cabinet, we are actively analyzing pay equity across our diverse municipal workforce and implementing strategies to address disparities by gender and race. Additionally, the city is already developing a comprehensive true cost-of-living measure as required by the New York City Charter to reflect the real cost of living in New York City. In conclusion, we thank the council for its ongoing commitment to increasing pay equity and improving the city's municipal workforce. At DCAST, we will continue to reimagine and fortify efforts to address inequities in pay in close partnership with our fellow agencies and the council. Thanks again, and at this time, we're happy to answer any questions.
Any other testimony from the panel? Nope. Okay. Thank you. I'll begin with some questions and then pass on to Chair Lewis. First of all, thank you all for taking the time. I really appreciate the continued partnership, especially with all of you here. We've been working hand-in-hand to try and make some improvements, and I think we have. So, with that said, I wanted to ask questions for DCAST along the lines of trainings. Do you anticipate making any changes to your citywide agency training curriculum? In particular, do you intend to continue to offer the cultural awareness and inclusivity and the professional development coursework?
So, we are always looking at our training portfolio to make adjustments where feasible. But the training that you mentioned, that is what we call, you know, it's a core training that we offer as a part of our diversity and inclusion portfolio. And I would like to turn it over to my colleague Sylvia to talk more about that.
Okay. Thank you for the question. So, we have a very robust curriculum on equity, inclusion, equal employment, opportunity. Besides the mandated trainings under the various local laws, such as sexual harassment prevention, Executive Order 16's LGBTQ+ inclusion as well, and of course, Everybody Matters, which is the overview training on DEI that has extensive modules on DEI, equal employment opportunity, and the fact that we are going to be enhancing that particular training by July of this year in compliance with Local Law 14 of 2014 with an anti-racism module. We have many other trainings in our portfolio that include microaggressions, unconscious bias, intersectionality, and EEO investigations. So, we keep building on the curriculum that's offered citywide, both to all of the employees as well as EEO professionals which are charged with ensuring that their workforce is knowledgeable about DEI as well as equal employment opportunity protections.
In the preliminary 2025 Mayor's Management Report, we see that in FY24, the number of trainings completed by city employees in equity and inclusion far surpassed the targeted rate. However, we note that the number of trainings completed by city employees in equity and inclusion during the first four months of 2025 fiscal year is around half that number of trainings completed in the first four months of 2024 fiscal year. Does this rate give rise to any concern for you, and do you anticipate seeing similar rates of completed trainings in equity and inclusion by the time this fiscal year comes to a close?
So, we take very proactive measures to galvanize agencies to meet the mandatory compliance of one-hundred percent, especially with the trainings that are mandated by legislation. And we meet regularly. This is reinforced by the Citywide Equity and Inclusion Meeting with its constituents, the EEO officers of every agency, and of course, the Human Capital Division reinforcing many principles with the agency personnel officers. So, what we do is we, for many years, have given strategies on how they can reach populations within decentralized workforce units that many agencies have to meet the challenges of training them, doing webcast types of trainings, doing instructor-led trainings, doing computer-based trainings, and allocating spaces for them. We have instituted Train-to-Trainer models so that individuals within those agencies can also be able to facilitate and issue trainings themselves to reach individuals. So, we consistently develop these strategies, communicate and disseminate them, and reinforce them. We've asked agencies to submit strategy plans as well every year so that they can also be galvanized and incentivized to meet the certain goals and standards. There's no reason why they can't implement deadlines within their own agency that don't abut with the end of the training cycle as well. So, there's myriad of strategies that we've implemented.
And I would just add that the MMR is a snapshot in time, and currently, we're within the Cycle VII for Sexual Harassment Prevention Training,
which ends in August, so we do anticipate that number will increase. Great. I also want to recognize that we've been joined by Councilmember Menon. Yep. Okay. So, in 2024, DCAST launched NY City Learn, a training platform for New York City employees. How is the platform being used to promote equitable access to training and upscaling opportunities for underrepresented employees?
Thank you. We are very excited about the NY City Learn platform because what it does, it provides access to, greater access, to individuals we're training. So, right now, the city employees can just go on NYC.gov/learn and see all of the different trainings that are available and register for them, you know, depending on what their interests are. For the cultural awareness trainings, those are free, so that process is a little bit easier and they're able to, you know, immediately go into those trainings. And so, we are consistently promoting all of the different trainings with not only our agency personnel officers or EEO officers, but our training liaisons and directly to the employees that we engage to make sure that they are aware of the access that they now have with the system.
Great. According to data reported by Mayoral Executive Order 45 of 2019, which requires New York City agencies and offices to publicly report five metrics of the city's equity-related work, only seventeen percent of agencies reported offering mentorship or training programs to support career advancement for underrepresented employees. What barriers prevent a wider adoption of this initiative, and how can agencies be incentivized to implement them? And the second question, second part of that question is, what role does DCAST play in ensuring that agencies adopt these programs as a standard practice?
So, what I can say is that, as it relates to training, Councilmember de la Rosa, you know that it's, you know, at the agency level, so agencies have to have a budget to send their employees to training. And so, what we do at DCAST is that we're always working to highlight free trainings at our agency personal officer meetings and, you know, just making the information available for agencies to know what's available for their employees. As it relates to Mayoral Executive Order 45, I can get back to you with an answer on that. You know, I can't provide any additional information.
Okay. I wonder if there is an opportunity to sort of cross-reference agencies that may have trouble retaining underrepresented groups. Is there sort of a cross-reference that DCAST can do in order to say, hey, we're noticing this pattern in an agency, this is something you can benefit from? Does that level of communication with the city agencies occur?
So I also wanted to add to what Katrina said in terms of the training and to respond to the question about the mentorship programs. As you know, different agencies have different levels and different budgets to be able to provide different types of mentorships. What we do in terms of the engagement and the support that we provide to the agencies, we try to figure out agencies that are doing really great things as a best practice and take that and have them present to, at one of our APO meetings, our EEO officers' meetings, so agencies can see, you know, a real life in action of how something like this can happen within their agency. For learning and development, we know that there sometimes is a restriction in terms of the budget. So what we have done and what we did last year is we did a training expo where we offered about 70-something free training for employees across the city. So we had about 1,300 individuals that participated in those trainings. And so it's a way for agencies and employees to know that this is available for them and to build that interest. And we do and work with agencies who are able to have their own, they may take an emotional intelligence training and want to give it directly to their agency. So we see a lot of that happening right now. So maybe they don't have a formal mentorship program, but they do take other initiatives to make sure that their folks get trained.
Okay. What measures are in place to track whether professional development programs are leading to actual career advancement for employees, particularly in these historically underrepresented groups?
I'd say one of the things that we're looking at right now is the different legislation that's asking us to do the surveys. Right now, we are working on the exit surveys. We have some results from that. We also have our career counseling programs that's going to help us to get some feedback on, you know, action items that folks are taking after being, taking the exams and so, I'm sorry, taking the training. And so we're looking at different ways that we can track that information. Unfortunately, sometimes that's at the agency level, so we don't necessarily have a citywide view on what actions they're taking with that.
On exit interviews, as you know, Local Law 13 of 2019 requires the EEPC to report on underutilization of minority groups in the city workforce. The report found increased departures in the city's workforce by Black and women employees at rates equal or greater to, greater than their representation in the workforce. For example, Black employees made up 32% of the workforce in 2023, but accounted for 39% of separations in 2024. Does DCAST exit interviews capture why underrepresented groups are leaving city service? And how is that information being used to inform policy or culture change in agencies?
Some of the key factors that we saw from the results from the exit interviews is, one, employees rated positively the work culture and the environment and the impact of their work and the alignment to what they're interested in. So that was a positive that we saw. One of the areas for improvement or one of the gaps is that they weren't aware of the different professional development opportunities or the career advancement opportunities available for them. And so we're looking at that because we operate on a civil service system that most of our titles, 83% of them which are competitive, have a career path. It's more so providing them with the knowledge that's needed so they understand that, hey, if you're living in, sitting in a competitive title, then there is a path that's already laid out for you and here's some of the steps that you can take. And so we do employees-specific civil service one-on-one information sessions where we walk employees through that process, where they can find more information about particular titles that they're in, where they can find more information about training and additional resources that are available for them. So a lot of the information that we saw, it was more so a lack of information. And we hope with the career counseling that the agencies will be doing that will have an impact on the population that is staying versus those that are leaving.
I appreciate your response and I appreciate that you all are taking the thorough steps to try and figure this out. But my question is more as to what are some of the patterns that we're seeing in terms of why Black employees are leaving city service? Is it wage-related? Is it lack of opportunity to promote up? Is it the competition from the private sector? Like what are you all seeing a pattern that is concerning? That maybe can inform some of our policy decisions or changes on the legislative side?
So the data that we're looking at, it's reflective of the entire workforce and it really doesn't focus on, you know, Black women or any particular group in general. But I believe our partners in CEI, you know, you guys have the annual report. Would you be able to speak to, you know, any support we provide them there?
So what we do is, of course, we provide tools to agencies to make assessments. And for example, there are certain local laws that agencies have had to comply with. For example, Local Law 27, in which we've actually included a template for agencies to actually assess the data in their annual plans. Under that local law, they have to actually include information on compensation and efforts to address issues of occupational segregation and pay disparity. So they have to actually take a look at their titles, their workforce numbers, the number of promotions that are happening, the number of terminations, et cetera. So it's, again, they have to do a holistic review of their particular circumstances, but we actually reinforce how they utilize these sort of templates and pieces of categories and information so they can fill that out. So we can't really speak for, you know, what's going on in terms of each particular agency. But there is Local Law 28 as well, and these agencies have to also report on their inclusive recruitment activities, things that actually engage employees, possibly contribute to retention efforts. The training programs that are related to appointing individuals to specific positions as well, the amount of funding that they attribute to recruitment, things of that nature. So those are all things that agencies are expected to use as tools and compliance in order to assess where these individual trends are coming from.
I understand that. It is alarming, though, that, you know, Black employees make up 32% of the workforce and in 2023 accounted for 39% of the separations, right? Like that, that is alarming to this council. It's alarming to us as a city, especially because we've seen, and this committee has certainly delved into some of the vacancy rates that we have in agencies. We know that there are a lot of agencies where there are a lot of positions. And so while I understand that this work is done on an agency level, in my view, I see DCAST as kind of like the clearinghouse of holding that data in order for us to figure out what is going wrong, you know, and why are we seeing these patterns? So I know there's more to come on that. I won't harp on it. I wanted to ask you, you testified that, hold on, let me find my number, that DCAST has completed the review of 90 civil service titles and there have been 61 that have been revised? Can you give us a little more on those revisions and what those revisions entail?
So it's really more of an expansion, you know, taking a look at the minimum qualifications for specific titles and taking into consideration life experience as an equalizer to qualify for the title. So I'll give you an example of staff analyst is a title that's used broadly across city government. And before we expanded the MQR, you needed a bachelor's degree to qualify, strictly a bachelor's degree. With the minimum qualification project, what we did was we expanded the minimum qualifications to include a high school diploma plus X number of years of experience to qualify for the title. And so that's pretty much the lens through which we looked at our title structure in collaboration with labor, in collaboration with agency, with our agency partners. You know, we were able to make a tremendous stride. So staff analyst is just one of those 61 titles that we expanded the minimum qualities.
Great. Good to hear. I'm going to ask two more questions and I'm going to pass it to Chair Lewis and then we'll come back. There's a lot of questions here, but I wanted to ask about inclusivity. In regards to inclusivity for individuals who speak English as a second language, and I often talk about this at hearings, or for those who have limited proficiency in English, what types of guidance for city employees does DCAST disseminate in non-English languages? For materials that are disseminated in non-English language, are those materials available only in the 10 languages mandated by Local Law 30? Or can translated materials be accessed upon the request in any language?
So I'm going to turn it over to Katie in a minute just to talk about our recruitment practices. But I wanted to give you an update on an effort that DCAST is undertaking. We are working to have our notice of examinations translated into 190 languages. And it's really thanks to your, you know, ideas and your advice around inclusivity in the workforce. So we're excited about this effort. We're hopeful to have everything up and running by January, not January, sorry, June of this year. And, you know, that's just another step in the right direction to ensure that all folks have more access to civil service jobs.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate those efforts.
Thank you. And I just wanted to add, from the recruitment standpoint, we looked at some of our materials that are evergreen and converted those to different languages depending on the population. So our brochure that provide an outline of, you know, how the civil service process, the exams, our FAQs. We also have an employee summary sheet. So we are working with our partners to convert those. And depending on the location that we're going, if we know that there are a particular language that is represented, then we'll bring those materials. But we do bring back home to the fact that, you know, the exams are, will be in English, but we understand that that's a need.
Yeah, absolutely. And we've had this conversation before, but, you know, even instruction, right? When you are not an English speaker and you read an instruction, in my case, in Spanish, you understand that, you're able to synthesize what they're asking you to do or what the instruction is, what the guide is, even if you're able to test-take in English, right? So in school, I test-take in English. I spoke Spanish at home. It wasn't until I got it that I was like, oh, wait a minute, this is how you test-take in English. I could learn how to take a test. You can learn those things. But to synthesize the information that you're trying to learn, that you have to capture sort of what is required of you in order to take that test, you know, in your own language, you're able to do that better. And so I've seen people, for example, study for exams and have the material in Spanish or in another language and then respond in English. It's just the way our brains work, right? You hear it in the language that you're used to, you understand it, and then you're able to process it and it comes out in English. So it's helpful and I'm glad to see that our conversations have led to this change. I think it's going to be helpful just for people to understand what is required of them and then take that extra step to actually learn and take the test in English. So thank you for doing that. I'm going to pass it to Chair Lewis and then I'll come back.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning again. I'm going to talk a little bit about career advancement. The EEPC underutilized analysis of the 2024 workforce found that Black workers were the most underutilized in managerial job groups, and women were underrepresented in these fields like law enforcement, skilled trades. These positions generally offer above-average city salaries, making their underrepresentation particularly concerning. What targeted strategies are in place to address occupational segregation?
So the most important tool that we have in our toolkit right now is to get the contract for the pay equity analysis underway. That effort will allow us an opportunity to have a title-by-title analysis to identify the issues and then develop, you know, recommendations and ideas on how to address. In addition to that, you know, we work in a highly civil service environment. 80% of the jobs that are offered through city government require participants to take a civil service exam. And most of those titles have built-in progression. You know, like, you know, you're coming at an entry-level title and then, you know, once you become permanent, you're able to take a promotion exam. So a lot of that stuff is built into the system. So I think that once we get the pay equity analysis underway, we can come up with, you know, thoughts and ideas on how to address some of the underutilization at the title level.
Why do you think agencies have been unable to make more significant progress in diversifying high-paying job groups despite longstanding awareness of these disparities? And that leads to the pay equity analysis. But why do you think that that's?
So, you know, I think it's many different factors that come into play. And, you know, I think that with DCAST, you know, working to be more transparent and share information about opportunities, about training, about our examination schedule with agency, with our agency partners, that will help, you know, in the long run. You know, this situation wasn't created, you know, in a day and it's going to take time for us to address some of the issues that are, you know, being revealed in the reports that you're reviewing.
Would you say it's like lack of coordination?
No, I think that we're working toward, you know, we're working toward addressing these issues in many different ways. So it's the examination schedule, our interaction with our agency partners, training, you know, our new learning and development system, the professional development trainings that are offered through our learning and development team and career counseling, which is one of the efforts that just came out of the city council. I think all of these things together will help us to address some of these issues. Adrian, did you want to?
And I would like to add that there are other measures, of course, that we continuously reinforce to agencies to use. These are tools and approaches such as reviewing their workforce metrics periodically, actually on a quarterly basis. And they're required to make these assessments, put it in their quarterly reports. They review the underutilization in job groupings that are relevant to their agencies so that they can strategize for effective outreach, so that they can recruit and enrich their applicant pools where there is underutilization and underrepresentation of certain demographics. So that is a continuous reinforcement. I'd also like to mention that Local Law 14 actually is also, requires agencies actually to make available fair and effective employment opportunities to women and people of color. And resulting from that, we've seen that there is a gradual impact on addressing things such as occupational segregation for women. So for example, I'd just like to mention that there are certain categories of titles where there has been an increment in the hiring of women. For FY '23, for example, in the last report, it increased from 28% to 33% in protective service work. There has also been several increases as well in the areas of service and maintenance and technicians. So the hiring of women has gradually increased. And it's important to note that because even though there are sometimes, as you mentioned, maybe attrition, it is a bit offset by the efforts that we continuously make with agencies to make opportunities available for women in areas where they're underrepresented.
Thank you. On February 28, 2025, 16 commissioners appointed by Mayor Adams called for the mayor's resignation if he failed to lay out a strategy to defend transgender New Yorkers, women and immigrants. While this letter demanded a response within a week, we have not yet heard about any response that the mayor's office may have provided. Can any of you please provide us with an update on the status of the mayor's response and what types of substantive plans the city has undertaken to protect vulnerable New Yorkers?
So I can speak generally to the importance of protecting individuals based on their gender identity, gender expression, and their transgender status. Most recently, I'd like to point out that we did actually put out a set of guidelines for agencies on respecting and supporting individuals based on their gender identity expression and transgender individuals in the workplace. So I encourage everybody to take a look at that guide. We're very proud of that. I also just want to, as an opportunity to reinforce that even though DEI, there are restrictions in the federal government under those executive orders, we've made clear to the EEO officers, which must disseminate this information to their agencies, that those prohibitions don't change our general objective to advance equity, diversity, and inclusion in the workplace specifically. Nothing changes about the prohibitions against discrimination and harassment for all under the protected status that we see in the EEO policy and the city human rights law and the New York State human rights law. It does not change our compliance with trainings mandated by local law and the city charter. It does not change recruitment outreach to make opportunities widely known to all qualified individuals. And it does not change applying those same qualification standards for selection, which is grounded in relevant skills and competencies that match our business needs. There's always going to be objective practices. There's our non-biased job descriptions, consistent questions, structured interviewing practices. It does not change our inclusive initiatives for equal access to opportunities for success and opportunities for performance development and skills development. And also gender identity protections, as I mentioned. There is a right to use the restroom. There is a right to use the restroom that is consistent with your gender identity, and that is still protected even under the Mayor Executive Order sixteen. And it doesn't change our ability to collect voluntary self-identification demographic data for purposes of Local Law fourteen or Executive Order or the EO four reports that we are still expected to produce. So I just want to say that the city's efforts to protect all individuals and our D E I practices continue.
Thank you. And just thing on D E I practices and protections, are you able to provide any updates on the Marshall Plan for Moms Task Force and the recommendations that will be put forth on how to best support working mothers and caregivers in New York City?
I first...
First, I'm Matt Graham, he and him. I'm the Policy Programs Analyst. Since 2018, I've been the Policy Programs Analyst, working on economic mobility and opportunity at the Commission on Gender Equity. So thanks for this chance to talk about C G E's work. So to the Marshall Plan for Moms Task Force, that is progressing, and that work is well underway. And I also wanted to jump in on your previous question about the administration's response to the commissioner's letter. Very briefly, so first of all, thank you to my colleagues for their response. But Commissioner Sidya Sherman from the Mayor's Office of Equity and Racial Justice shared a response on behalf of the administration, which captured work across multiple agencies that addressed issues important to the commissioners and to our city. So C G E commissioners such as yourself should be fully abreast of the work that the city is doing and how C G E and M O E R J are fully committed and steadfast to gender equity.
Thank you. In March twenty twenty-five, M O E R J's newsletter, in the M O E R J's newsletter, we saw that Commissioner Sherman delivered remarks for a conversation focused on how New York City is ensuring the fair distribution of government resources at a discussion titled Investing in Equity for All. Are you able to give us some highlights about what was discussed and the main ways in which the city can improve the distribution of resources to improve equity?
Thanks again for that question. So I work at C G E, which is within M O E R J, but I can certainly go to my colleagues and ask for that information.
Say that last part.
I'll be happy to go to my colleagues and ask them for that information.
Okay, that would be very helpful. Thank you. In regards to the Pay Equity Cabinet, it is our understanding that C G E and DCAST are co-chairs of the cabinet to create a roadmap to achieve pay equity and tackle occupational segregation in the civil service. Are there any updates on the work in this cabinet that you all are able to share today? And any actions that the city council could assist with for the cabinet's work?
Oh, thanks for that question. Yes, I would just echo what my colleagues at DCAST have said, that we're laser-focused on this pay equity job title analysis, and that is certainly progressing.
This question's on sexual harassment. Feeling safe from harassment at work is an important aspect of workforce retention. Local Law ninety-seven of twenty twenty-eight requires DCAST to submit a comprehensive report on sexual harassment complaints filed at every city agency. The fiscal, in fiscal year twenty twenty-three, this report shows an increase in complaints, with three hundred and eighty complaints filed, up to two hundred and forty-seven in the previous report. Was a study ever conducted to determine why the number of complaints rose drastically?
So, pardon me. So in our report for Local Law ninety-seven, we do attribute the change in number of complaints mainly to actually the success that people are more aware of their rights, responsibilities, and the resources to report. So always recognizing that the number of complaints are actually what's actually reported, not necessarily what has already, what would have been investigated with a particular outcome. So those numbers are taken more as the signifying or as evidence of the awareness there is to report and come forward and feel safe that you are protected against retaliation. So we view that as a positive thing, that our outreach efforts, our training efforts, our educational efforts through other things built into Local Law one oh one, which is a climate survey, right? It educates people about where they could go, gauging their awareness of what they can do, where they can go. The fact that we put out materials in the EO policy, EO handbook, that we have a plethora of information available on our website. We encourage agencies to post this information, post the transparency of the investigative process for EO complaints. That's one graphic. Every agency has been told for years to post that. And so we think that if there is an increase in the number of reported complaints, it is a positive thing because that way they can be addressed.
Thank you. This is my last question. It's for DCAST. President Trump issued Executive Order one four, one four, one five, one, ending radical and wasteful government D E I programs and preferencing, which directs the elimination of D E I personnel practices and celebrations across federal agencies. This has resulted in sweeping rollbacks of protections and programs meant to advance equity in the public workforce. Has the federal ban on D E I policies and related personnel created any measurable impact on recruitment efforts or exam outcomes within the city workforce?
So I, you know, I do want to emphasize before we pass it to Human Capital that, as I mentioned before, it should not. We have made clear to all of the personnel officials and EO officials to reinforce to their agencies and reassure them that our practices to do broad outreach, to enrich our applicant pools, make people aware of our opportunities, because we do have an obligation to engage in fair, effective employment practices, nothing changes, as I said. And the protections against discrimination and harassment in the city under the protected categories that exist in our jurisdiction still exist. We still have practices where we apply fair reviews of the same qualification standards required for everybody, and it's grounded in competencies that meet our business needs. So we don't expect that anything should be changing. Where, if at all, there are agencies that may be working with programs that may have federal funding, they have been advised to consult with the Law Department. But I'll turn it over to Human Capital if you have anything else.
Just sticking to what Sylvia said, recruitment is still the same. Agencies are still showing a high level of recruitment for diverse communities, and they're still doing their outreach and still engaging with us even more so in the same way. So that hasn't really changed. And with, you know, city agencies being, going out there and even our team going out there, we're able to respond to questions from candidates about what, you know, changes and to confirm that we're still operating on our normal sense of, you know, improving D E I within the workforce.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to hand it back to Chair Del Rosso.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions, and then I'm going to pivot to O L R. Local Law twenty-seven of twenty twenty-three requires the DCAST to contract with an entity to conduct a three-year pay equity analysis on a minimum number of civil service titles. The analysis would examine civil service titles with the largest gender and racial/ethnic demographic differences from the demographic found in New York, demographics found in New York City. At last year's hearing on paid disparities in the municipal workforce held in April, we learned that DCAST had recently reissued a request for a quote as part of an RFP process, and we're expecting responses from vendors at the end of April twenty twenty-four. Where's the agency on this process?
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier, we have engaged a vendor. The contract is signed, and we're working through final approval. So we expect to have everything, you know, up and ready to go within the next three months or so.
Great. And one of my favorite topics, the Public Service Corps Program. We received the first report from DCAST on the administration of the program and its success in engaging student-centered activities and recruitment of diverse candidates. Are you able to share any information about your preparation for the Public Service Corps Program for this coming summer? And what types of outreach has DCAST been able to do, to recruit students for internships in the city?
My favorite topic as well. Yeah, so we continue to do outreach. One of the great things about the Workforce Operations Team is that we're able to combine the recruitment teams with all of the internships and fellowships teams. So every instance that we go out into the public, we're speaking about all of our programs, including the Public Service Corps Program. And we're also planning another hiring event. It's an opportunity to get agencies and students in the same place and hopefully make quick hiring decisions. And we're also targeting and rebuilding relationships with our CUNY work-study coordinators to make sure that we are engaging not just the schools that we typically work with, but having a broader scale. And we are reaching out to, you know, schools in Staten Island and other areas where we don't typically engage. So we're definitely, and also looking at internally on how the program is and how we can expand it to reach more agencies and more students.
Thank you so much for those efforts. I did have one more question. Hold on, let me find it. Okay. And I guess this is for across the board, but does DCAST or M O E R J ever work with the Office for Persons with Disabilities to ensure that the city's workforce is inclusive of employees with disabilities? What are those conversations or collaborations like?
I can definitely speak on that. We, of Citywide Recruitment, we manage a fifty-five A program, which is a program that allows individuals with disability to be hired into government positions without having to take the civil service exam. And so we do partner with external entities, including the Mayor's Office for People with Disability. We actually just did a meeting with all of our fifty-five A coordinator, re, you know, providing them with an overview again of the fifty-five A program, reintroducing them to M O P D's N Y C at Work team, and also engaging Access V R, which is one of the state agency that participates, that confirms a person that has a disability and can do the job. And we are actually working now and working with different agencies. Just tomorrow, we have a meeting with an agency to speak to their hiring managers about the program and the initiatives that we're doing and that they can take on to move it forward. And so we're doing this in conjunction with the Mayor's Office for People with Disabilities.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Oh, Councilmember Feliz, we've been joining my Councilmember Feliz. Great. So O L R, a few questions. In light of the rollbacks of federal D E I protections, how is O L R reaffirming its commitment to equity in the municipal workforce?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember. So, you know, as my colleagues from DCAST mentioned, you know, DCAST obviously remains committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and, you know, that obviously, as a city agency, we participate in all the DCAST, you know, the DCAST-directed programs and train, et cetera. We also continue to work with our union partners. Obviously, our city unions are very committed to that goal. We continue to work with them on any issues that arise and, you know, continue to work with them in the spirit of promoting that goal.
Great. When O L R enters into collective bargaining negotiations, to what extent are equitable representation and workforce diversity considerations incorporated? Specifically, do any contract provisions support equitable hiring, advancement, or retention of women or minority employees?
So I'd say it depends on the unit, obviously. You know, we always, first and foremost, we listen to the union representing the workers about what they may need and what they're looking for. If issues come up, especially related to recruitment and retention, you know, we try to work with those unions to kind of deal with those issues. A few examples, in the District Council thirty-seven agreement, we established with them for the first time an annual contribution to a childcare fund, which obviously, you know, the nature of it, would benefit often women. In addition, we have focused a lot on some groups which tend to have more women than men, including nine-one-one operators, the police communication technicians. We've been, O L R has been engaged for about a decade, I would say, very closely working with that union, with the C thirty-seven and the Police Department to try to kind of enhance recruitment and retention. We've worked with them on a pilot program for some press tours, twelve-hour tours, which allows fewer appearances, and given kind of the location where they work, can really benefit the workers by having fewer commutes to work. We also, we meet frequently with them about that pilot. We also have established a bonus program for nine-one-one operators, which started last year and will continue into the future.
How does that program work, by any chance?
So there is an attendance threshold where as long as you meet a certain attendance threshold over a six-month period, you are eligible for the bonus for that period.
And that was collectively bargained, right?
Yes.
Okay. More to come on nine-one-one operators. This is not the topic, but you know that I am very, very concerned, and a lot of us on the council have been very concerned about the forced overtime and other issues that have been raised by the union. But that's for another topic, but just, we will continue those conversations.
And we certainly share those concerns, Councilmember. It's, we know, it's a vital job. We know it's a very challenging job, and that's why we've been so committed. You know, we have many staff who have been working on this for a long time, and obviously we'd like to see more improvement, but we will keep working on it.
Great. How is O L R engaging municipal unions in conversations about diversity and inclusion? And what role can labor play in creating a more inclusive workplace?
So I would say generally, you know, we defer to our colleagues at DCAST on, for their programs on diversity, equity, and inclusion. You know, we don't necessarily affirmatively reach out to unions on those issues unless there's a program that DCAST is turning up with where communication with labor would be kind of beneficial. But certainly, if any union came to us wanting to work on those things, we are always open to it, and we would, you know, work with our DCAST colleagues on it.
And what metrics or benchmarks does O L R use to evaluate whether agencies can make meaningful progress on equity or retention? Are there any?
That's not really what O L R really plays. Again, I would defer to my colleagues at DCAST who monitor that information.
Okay. All right. So pointing it back to DCAST, are there any benchmarks to evaluate when agencies are making meaningful progress on equity?
So the most visible document that we have available as it relates to diversity is the Workforce Profile Report. And I'm excited to announce that, you know, we're planning to release the F Y twenty-four report at the end of this month. That will be the first time that we are on par with the fiscal year. So we can, of course, use that more readily to measure success and address benchmarks.
Great. I'm looking forward to seeing that. I think that's all our questions for today. Thank you. Thank you all so much for your efforts and for taking the time to come out today. This is such an important issue. We have sort of a version of this every single year, but it's a reflection of this council's commitment to equity, and I know the administration is working towards those goals as well. So we're appreciative of your collaboration.
Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we begin, I remind members of the public that this is a formal government proceeding and that decorum shall be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent at all times. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recording to the sergeant-at-arms for inclusion in the hearing record. If you wish to speak at today's hearing, please fill out an appearance card with a sergeant-at-arms and wait for your name to be called. Once you have been recognized, you will have two minutes to speak on today's topic of equitable representation in the city workforce. If you have a written statement or additional written testimony that you wish to submit for the record, please provide a copy to testimony, of the testimony, sorry, of the testimony to the sergeant-at-arms. You may email written testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within seventy-two hours of this hearing. Audio and video recordings will not be accepted. When you hear your name, please come up to the witness table. For the first panel, we invite Joey Di Francesco, Spencer Pepette, Tyler Birchfield, Anne Anseio Bacato, and Damon Kukowski. And if I messed up your name, please correct it for the record. Please come up to the witness table. Joey Di Francesco, Spencer Pepette, Tyler Birchfield, Anne Anseio Bacato, and Damon Kukowski. Thank you. Okay, one more time. Joey Di Francesco, Spencer Pepette, Tyler Birchfield, Anne Anseio Bacato, and Damon Kukowski. And again, I apologize if I butchered your name. And again, I apologize if I butchered your name, and if you could please correct it for the record. Okay. And just for everyone on the panel, we have a two-minute limit. The clock is there. We can begin on either side of the panel. Just introduce yourself for the record, and you may begin when you're ready. Oh, hold on one second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Damon Kukowski. I'm here to speak about the resolution for the In Support of the Living Wage for Musicians Act.
Great.
I'm a native New Yorker. I've been working musicians since the late 1980s, recording and performing in the indie rock band Galaxy 500, and then in the duo Damon and Naomi. My mother, who's now 94, is also a native New Yorker, also a professional musician, jazz singer Nancy Harrow. She's been recording and performing since the early 60s. I grew up with my mother and her musician friends trading stories about the music business and all the difficulties of making a life as a professional musician. I'm under no illusions about how hard that has always been. Music, like all the arts, is work without security, a predictable income. That is something we all accept. However, there's been a profound change in the last 20 years for all recording musicians that has made everything harder than before. Ever since streaming technology entered the marketplace, our incomes have plummeted. Streaming is now responsible for 84% of all revenue from recorded music in the United States. However, unlike previous technologies, streaming is unregulated and pays recording musicians nothing directly, nothing. This has wreaked havoc in the lives of working musicians like me and my mother, who started our careers in a different paradigm. But what's harder to accept is that streaming is making it nearly impossible for younger musicians to build a career as professionals. This is not because streaming isn't making money. It's often said that streaming has rescued the industry for the digital era because it's now generating billions of dollars, quite literally. That's true. But none of it, zero, is paid to recording musicians directly. All the money in streaming goes to technology platforms and to the major labels. Meanwhile, nearly all musicians who make the recorded music content for streaming are working multiple jobs, struggling to survive while continuing to create new recordings that have no way to reach our listeners but through this same system. The Living Wage for Musicians Act introduced last Congress by Representative Rashida Talib and will change this.
If you could just wrap up.
Yeah.
But thank you.
I just want to thank the council for taking this up and for urging the Congress to pass the Living Wage for Musicians Act. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here.
Hi, my name's Joey DeFrancesco. I'm a longtime musician. I'm a resident of Astoria here in New York, and I'm an organizer with United Musicians and Allied Workers, or YUMA. We're a national advocacy group pushing for rights for all music workers. We mobilize hundreds of thousands of musicians all over the country, including tens of thousands here in New York City. Here with YUMA and a whole bunch of other musicians to also urge the council to pass this resolution, support of the Living Wage for Musicians Act. My organization, YUMA, helped to develop this legislation cheerfully with Representative Rashida Talib's office, and it remains the single strongest piece of legislation to get musicians paid fairly for our work online. Here in New York, especially, rents for everyone continue to skyrocket, costs of living continue to rise, and yet the payouts from streaming, which is the main way musicians are distributing music now, are not only miniscule but continue to get smaller and smaller, and there's no regulation on these payouts, all while the corporate CEOs, tech CEOs who run these companies and the big labels are seeing soaring profits. Musicians create the value for these companies and deserve to be fairly paid. The Living Wage for Musicians Act is unique in that it bypasses the middlemen, middlepeople, and drain, who drain the music industry and send, instead, the bill sends royalties directly to artists. This would make a huge difference for artists' ability to continue living and working in New York City. Tens of thousands of musicians have signed on to our petitions urging Congress to pass this act. And just this week, we launched a new petition just for New York City musicians urging the council to also pass this resolution. Over 600 New York City musicians have also signed on to this, and I'm going to provide this to counselors following this hearing. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Tyler Birchfield. I'm a resident of Bushwick in Brooklyn, New York, and I am in the jurisdiction of the council member Sandy Nurse. I want to say thank you, even though she's not here, to Councilmember Hanif for sponsoring this bill and to everyone else who is co-sponsoring the bill and is in support of it. I want to thank the previous two speakers for going over a lot of great points, and something that is not always touched on when we talk about, you know, the issue of streaming technology platforms and pay issues is just how much the overhead is for independent musicians like myself and the others here to, you know, create musical content and create their albums or even create the live performances, which is yet another area where it's a struggle and where exploitation is real. As an example, you know, to put out an album, it can cost thousands of dollars in the studio. It can cost hundreds or maybe thousands of dollars to do photography, to do album art. The cost of equipment, you know, as a saxophonist, you know, a decent professional saxophone costs about at least $3,500 now. I expect those costs to go up with inflation and tariffs and other things like that. And I think that that's just another angle that would be nice for people to consider if they're not part of the industry, is the overhead costs. The CEO of Spotify, Daniel Ek, has made it clear that he doesn't understand kind of just how difficult and time-consuming and costly it is to put out albums when you listen to his statements about... Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you for being here.
Hi, my name is Spencer Pepette. I am a musician living in New York. I'm in Ridgewood, Queens. I also am an organizer with YUMA, and I play in a band that tours and releases music. I think musicians are getting hit on all sides. We are facing predatory label deals, low show pay, and one of the main ways that we begin to make being a musician a feasible profession in the current age is through the Living Wage for Musicians Act, because it's the first step towards creating, again, a feasible way for this profession to stay a profession. Right now, musicians are getting priced out of New York. We are struggling to make ends meet if we want New York to stay one of the music capitals of the world and of the country, of course. I think that we need to acknowledge that people are getting priced out, and the only way that we fix that is through higher payments from streaming. And it's a good first step to then address the rest of the music industry as well. That's all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anne Anzio Baccato. I am a jazz musician and folk musician living in Brooklyn, and I just wanted to speak personally about the impact of what he was saying about overhead costs. Like, we spend so much money to put the albums out. It is money that I have had to work outside of the music industry to then funnel money into my musical career. And when I first released an album with my group in 2017, I did not put it on Spotify because I already knew that their business model is stealing. And I put it on Apple Music, which at the time had the model where they sold your album online for $10, and we made nine out of those $10. And I received checks from Apple until they looked over at the other guys and said, "No, why don't we just do that?" And now I make nothing. And I'm still trying to recoup the costs of the album that I have put out in 2017. So I have had to look outside of music for income in order to make a living, be able to remain a New Yorker. And this has a really negative impact, not only in our lives, but in the industry, in the quality of the music that people can consume. And I'm here to support this resolution, and thank you so much for taking it up.
Well, first, we want to thank Representatives Talib for taking the leadership role in Congress, and here in the council, we thank Councilmember Hanif. You know, the second part of the title of this committee is labor, civil service and labor. And we recognize that the music industry is a workforce in addition to being a creative capital for our city. Everything that you all have expressed here is something that this committee understands and knows, and it is part of the issues that we see with how unaffordable our city is becoming for working-class New Yorkers. But the difference here is that we need y'all to stay, because without the creative capital of the city, it's not New York City. And so, you know, I personally support this legislation, and we look forward to, as a council, being able to pass it. Obviously, that's, you know, a symbolic gesture of support for the federal level, but the work doesn't stop here, and we're grateful for each of you coming and sharing your vulnerabilities. It's not easy to share personal struggle, and so we're grateful for you all being here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a second panel. When I hear, when you hear your name, please come up to the dais. Paisley Fields, Tom Beamer, Francisco Cathcart, Andrew Paulson, and Andrew Waldron. And again, if I messed up your name, just correct it for the record and excuse me for that.
Sorry. My name is Paisley Fields. I'm a resident of Kensington, Brooklyn, and I'm here to support fair pay for musicians. And I just want you to think about a song that's not been released by maybe the most well-known person, but a song that meant a lot to you and just, like, really made an impact. And the person who wrote that song, the songwriter, the musician, the producer's like, that's who you're looking at right now. And the landscape has just changed so much in the last 10 to 15 years that it's becoming almost impossible for us to continue to make music. And we want, you know, that feeling you have from that song that you're thinking of, we want that to exist for the next generation. So that's why we're advocating for this fair pay, and that's, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Beamer. I'm a recording engineer and mixer, live in Flatbush. I just wanted to speak a little bit on the kind of wider ecosystem that's affected by, you know, these streaming payouts. You know, when musicians are hurting, there's a whole industry of people associated with the music industry that also hurt. You know, recording engineers, mixers, producers, people in the live sound field, you know, down to like luthiers, you know, composers, music copyists, and, you know, the list goes on. All of these people are affected by, you know, musicians not getting fair pay. You know, obviously, this has, like, this is related to, you know, the cost of living crisis, the housing affordability crisis in the city. But we're seeing, you know, in the past especially 20 years, we've seen a lot of these jobs, you know, not just musicians, but this broader ecosystem, a lot of these jobs being moved out to LA, Nashville, Austin, other cities that are more affordable. And I think that, you know, having, you know, having musicians being able to make, actually make a living from their music, you know, aside from the cultural impacts, obviously, like, that economic impact on the city, you know, would be hugely beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Andrew Paulson. I live in Hell's Kitchen. I'm a singer-songwriter. I'm a member of the Performing Rights Organization ASCAP, and like most musicians, I have music on Spotify. While I'm using my own words and representing myself, I'm also here on behalf of all of my musician friends that are unable to be here at City Hall today. I could read off a list of at least 25 incredibly talented performers and songwriters that are friends of mine, with music also available on online streamers, and these are also the same people that you would find performing at cafes and bars or busking in parks all around the city each night, each day, providing entertainment relief to thousands of New Yorkers. And they would all love to be here to speak to you today at City Hall, but they're not. Why? Why aren't they here? Well, it's because they're working. They are teachers, waiters, office workers, graphic designers, nannies and baristas by day because they cannot survive in this city off their music alone. Every day, I see New Yorkers on the sidewalks, the subway, the bus, with their headphones on, with their Bluetooth speakers blaring their favorite music. Because it makes them happy, it gives them confidence, and it expresses how they are feeling. The stories and emotions shared with and through music help listeners make sense of their lives and make connections for all of us to understand the world that we live in. Our art has value. Our lives have value. It's time that Spotify recognizes that. Thank you.
Check. Used to it now. Hi, my name's Andy Waldron. I was born in District 1, represented by Councilmember Marte, and then I live in District 34, represented by Councilmember Gutierrez. I'm here to speak about the, like, civil service and labor, Councilmember De La Rosa mentioned, of wanting us to stay here. And as someone who has, who was born here, who continues to work here in what has been traditional music job and labor, like record stores, like Rough Trade, who's chosen to have their sole U.S. location in the great New York City, or knitting factory, who has also been a foundation for many wonderful and innovative musicians. I worked at those places because I knew that New York City had a community and a music and arts way of living and cultural epicenter that I want to continue singing along with all my friends here today. And I still have to be on Medicaid. I still have to figure out how to pay my fellow laborers, my fellow musicians, my fellow stagehands. So as one of the 14,000 working musicians that helped contribute to New York City's economy through the art sector, I would like to, like my wonderful colleagues, constituents here, share and work together to continue that song, continue that melody, and I hope my council members from where I was born and where I currently work also sign on to support this resolution as well. Thank you.
Hello. Good morning, my fellow New Yorkers. My name is Paco Cathcart. I was born in St. Vincent's Hospital on 7th Ave, but I grew up in a part of Williamsburg, Brooklyn called Los Surres, South Side. My story is the story of countless musicians laboring in this city and elsewhere. Thousands and thousands of listeners use my product every month via streaming services, and it adds up to pennies in the bank account. If there are literally thousands of people using your product, should you not be able to comfortably pay your rent? Should you have to worry at the end of the month about covering the bills that keep going up and up? Shouldn't you be able to save even a little money? If a popular chef, making healthy and delicious food that people eat thousands of times a month, receives pennies for the labor of cooking that food, for their expertise, for their contribution to the culture, is that fair? We're cooks here. We cook the sole food that is music. Everyone in this room knows what I'm talking about. Music is a necessity of communal life. Are we actually a great community here, or do we only claim fleeting membership and community for political convenience? I work full-time on my craft. That is, at least 40 hours a week. On top of that, of course, I work side hustles, set building, landscaping. I'm also a recording engineer, but I forever worked at steeply discounted rates because musicians are broke. A while back, I was working in the shop with my good friend and longtime set-building boss, Christian Dutrem, and he told me, "Paco, you should not be working side jobs. You should be making music all the time and living off of it. You're too talented." We know it. We know it well. We are not lazy people. We're hard workers. My roots are in Antioquia, Colombia, and the people there are called Paisa. If you know about Paisa culture, you know that we are known for our borderline maniacal work ethic. Can I finish? Is that up?
Sure. If you could just wrap it up.
Thank you so much. I'll be quick. I'm also a born-and-bred New Yorker, and we New Yorkers are not exactly known for laziness either. But we are at a point where having both talent and the willingness to work your ass off is just not enough to make even the semblance of a decent living. We're the victims of a broken music industry, where predatory monopolizing tech companies sell convenience to their customers at the price of artists' livelihood. Their dominance of the industry obliterates any possibility of working outside of that paradigm. Don't tell me to just keep your music off the streaming platforms if you think it's wrong. That's like telling the miner in a single-industry coal-mining town who is struggling to organize for better working conditions, "If you don't like the conditions at the mine..." "If you don't like the conditions at the mine, just go work somewhere else." Every day, do we not burn the coal? Every day, do we not eat the meal? Every day, do we not listen to the music? Thank you very much.
Thank you all again. Same thoughts of support and solidarity that I expressed to the panel before. We're grateful for you being here, and obviously, expressing your experiences, your lived experiences and your vulnerabilities is important to us as a council, and we look forward to supporting the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, panel number three includes Elijah Diaz, Marshall Moran, Michael De Barge, and Christopher Hierro.
Good morning, council. My name is Elijah Diaz, and today I'm here as a representative for the voices of District 45 in Brooklyn. I've surveyed a lot of members of my community, especially around the New Kirk Plaza area, and I've generated a couple of questions, but since I'm time constrained today, I'll just get into the gist of it. People want to know, can Councilmember Lewis provide any data showing?
Sorry, excuse me. Testimony is not questions. You can provide a statement if you'd wish.
Okay, I can provide a statement.
A Q and A.
Okay.
So if you could please just read your statement.
Okay.
We will accept it onto the record, and it should be relevant to the topic being discussed today.
Okay, so the community feels that there's no significant increase or noticeable equitable treatment for gender, non-binary individuals and minority populations. They feel that this legislation is merely fluff, and there's no actual measurable increase in change for any of this legislation. Also, people are concerned that the task force that is supposed to be implementing these changes and making the metrics will be compromised by other candidates, potential elected officials like Andrew Cuomo. So they're very concerned about, you know, the legislation being passed, and then all of a sudden, the city council has no power or has no jurisdiction to actually represent the change that it's meant to. And the people want to hear of a town hall meeting. A lot of people from my district, I don't think frankly anybody from my district even knew about this meeting, and so there's no representation, there's no knowledge of any of this happening. So the people want to hear a town hall from the council member or council members, you know, relating to these topics. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and just for public record, all council hearings are noticed on the website. Thank you. Whoever wants to go next on this side, or just please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, I'm Marshall Moran. I live in Ridgewood, New York. Lived in New York most of my life now. Geez. I am an audio engineer, a musician, a teacher, and I just work in music, like everybody here. We're all music workers. The entire industry has suffered. As streaming revenue has like gone down for artists, as artists have lost money coming out of what Damon Krasowski was talking about, the eras before streaming, I've watched this community like contract. It's horrible. I've, I just always wanted to be a music worker. I just wanted to be able to play cool, fun music with my friends and work jobs that would support everything. I've watched the entire ecosystem contract as people can't pull in revenue. I've watched experimental jazz musicians, like people who've been here, I've watched it. They've lost major forms of revenue. They always had to work other jobs. This isn't right. Like everybody said here, we don't want to lose any of this. One part of the LWMA that's important to me, should mention, I'm organizer with UMA as well. One of the aspects of this bill that's very important to me personally, and I just want to say here, is the revenue stream it would create carves out money for non-featured performers. What that means is if you're someone that worked on a record, you gave it your all, you get money for that. You get, you get a special, like, you're getting royalty and you're getting acknowledged for that. So there's a lane for like awarding people who worked on your records to make sure that they also are compensated fairly. And that in the spirit of everything with the LWMA, that's what we're looking for, is to compensate everybody fairly. So to what everybody has said here, we can have a sustainable music ecosystem because like, yeah, I don't think anybody doesn't feel that way who spoke in here, that we need to protect this. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you so much.
My name is Michael De Barge. I'm from Ozon Bar, Queens. And I'm the owner of Midtown Radio Records. It's a firm that handles artist management, music publishing estates, and radio promotion. I'm here in support of the Fair Wage for Musicians Act. These people moved to New York City to live their dream. This is the culture hub where musicians come to thrive. Over the last 25 years, as a writer, producer, radio promoter, I've been very blessed to have many of my records go platinum. But the artists that I know and that I meet and that I interact with, they're all struggling. Basically, they're broke. A couple of years after the streaming started, I opened a studio. I had it for 10 years. It was on 39th and 8th, and I never charged a single artist for a session. I would go in there for 16 hours a day on the weekends, and that anybody who wanted to come, come record whatever they wanted, free of charge, they would own their masters. And I did this because I knew they couldn't afford it, and I knew that the way that things were going, it was not in their favor. So fast forward to 2025, not even I could maintain keeping that studio in business. None of us can afford to keep going doing what we're doing. I've even had to diversify the way that I earned through bookings and other matters. I even had to just move on from helping independent artists, and it's terrible. I still try to do it where I can, but I'm watching them struggle all the time. I know I'm coming from the other side of the fence, but I know how important this is to all the other artists that really need it. I really want the council and everyone to understand that these are not just musicians that are doing something they're passionate about. These are the people that write the soundtracks to your lives, and it should be appreciated, and it's not. The most disgusting part of it is that the streaming companies have made more money, and they now control 70% of the market, and they continue to pay less and less and less every year. At one point, the streaming companies paid about 9.1 cents per stream. Some companies like Xbox Live paid up to 3 cents per stream. And now it's a fraction of that. And Spotify is the worst culprit of it all. I yield my time.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christopher Hierro. I'd like to speak to the entire council, but I'd like to speak especially to Ms. De La Rosa. As a fellow Dominican, maybe you or your parents will remember, there was a band called La Gran Manzana from the Dominican Republic. My father was one of the frontmen in that band, Henry Hierro. And they had numerous hits, very beloved in the 80s. Well, I grew up in a home where my father helped raise five, well, all five of us, three kids, him and my mom, solely off of music. And I remember days when my father used to get royalty checks and be able to pay the bills, buy us food with royalty checks. I remember when my father used to be working all the time. My father used to be playing gigs all over the city, and it was normal for me. It was like I used to go to school, my other friends, their parents did other things, and my father was a musician, and that's how we made a living. I followed in his footsteps. I'm also a songwriter, producer, singer. I'm one of the lucky ones. I get to go on tour as a musician with a very big artist from Latin America. But not all musicians have that luck, and they're not that fortunate. They're being told on one side that, yes, even the playing field now, everyone can release their music and be out there just like the big artists. But simultaneously, our royalties have been dwindling. The money that we're making is less and less. It's really ridiculous. It's one of the only industries where we put in all this work, and we're expected to just shut up and take whatever we're dealt, take the promotion, whatever it is, the exposure, whatever that accounts for. And it just makes no sense. I think we need this bill. We need to be paid a fair wage.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and again, thank you to this panel for your meaningful words and for being here today. We really appreciate it. Thank you all.
I didn't get an opportunity to address the last couple of panels, but I just wanted to just thank everyone here from the Musicians Union and those that are here just in general to support the bill. I'm one of the co-sponsors of the bill, but I do want to say that while your art is very important, and we need it each and every day for different and myriad of reasons, it is very important that you all are here today and you remain consistent in adding pressure. It's very important on all levels, both within the council and on the other side of the aisle. It is very important that you're here today. We are in full support. I know some of the funding that I give to folks by New Kirk Plaza, to some of those musicians, they utilize that money as an added measure for wherever they have a deficit. So I just want to thank you all for being here today. My brother's a musician, so I understand the struggle. And just want to tell you, let today not be the only day that you're here advocating for this bill, but for the additional resources that you need. So thank you.
Thank you, Chair. And now I want to call our last in-person panel before we move to Zoom. Yvonne Jennings, Sharon Brown, and Raul Rivera. Ms. Jennings? You may begin, Ms. Jennings.
Hi. Gender Equity? Yeah. Stalk initiative that started in 2006. Her name was Jacqueline Ebanks. She used to be with that Gender Equity. I have her card. And I met with her five years ago, then I went with her before. The last time I met with her, there was a whole table of different people from her office, and they all saw the letters that go to the White House since 2009 to the four presidents. I called your office yesterday, I think, and spoke to your chief of staff. It's an urgent issue where I am staying, the man over me, don't take this the wrong way, he's trying to K.I.L. me. And on February the 5th, I had a pain across my chest for an hour when I couldn't move. Everything goes in my diary. I have a diary. I keep a good diary. I told the mayor, the governor, and most of all, then Biden about that because the letters are 5,000 plus that go at every camera I pass. June the 25th, he gave me a heart attack, the man over me. He has a device, he moves it around, I don't know what it is, and I got very sick. The heart attack started before noon and went until 3:00 in the morning. And at North Central Hospital from 11:00 PM to 3:00 AM, the wonderful staff marched back and forth like the wonderful people are marching out. That's what they did. No one helped me. I laid and moaned and cried in pain, excruciating pain. I'm now not well. It's so bad, we can't go there. And I spoke here on February the 24th, I spoke here. And I had reached out to then, what's his name, Yusuf, the chair, you know, and his chief of staff, Ms. Stevens. And that was, I spoke on February the 24th. You would see the meeting. I don't hear from anybody. I'm not well due to the man upstairs. And repeat, emails, and everything went in February to the mayor, the governor, and then the heart attack came.
We want to assist you. So my deputy chief of staff, Shubra Mishra, is here. So she's gonna, we'll meet with you right after this.
When I leave here, I'm gonna be grabbed at harassed. I'm over here watching you wonderful with the gun in the badge creep around me. I don't know why.
Thank you, Ms. Jennings.
Thank you.
She's offered help, and I just want to remind the panelists to stay on topic. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sharon Brown. Before I begin, remember, Israel, release the hostages. Let Yahweh's people go defend Israel. Okay, for employment, we cannot employ homosexuals and transgender in the workplace. Homosexuality, transgender, LGBTQIA must be banned from the workplace. I ask that the city council and mayor acknowledge we are a Judeo-Christian nation, and homosexuality must be barred and removed. I am currently suing Spotify, Google, and a couple of other companies concerning my music. It is a terrible situation for the musicians. A lot of the situations, there are bigger artists out there, and instead of you getting your streamings, other people are getting streamings. There's a whole lot of criminal activity that is going on with Spotify. If you look on the search engine to look at your music, you'll notice that Spotify and Google are removing some of your searches. So if I have a song called heterosexuality or something like that, Google and Spotify together remove it so that people are not clicking to be able to go to your music. Some people that were looking for my music, they said they tried to click on it, they were not able to access the music. So some of these streaming platforms are doing it intentionally, and they are still collecting the monies for whoever, however, whatever they're doing with the monies. But you're getting clicks. People aren't able to listen to your music. So there's a lot of different shady things that are going on, and I am currently in federal court with a bunch of the different companies. Some of the songs and things, they don't want to put out there. Just one last sentence.
Please wrap up.
Some of the songs they don't want to put out there, but then like a week or two later, someone else comes out with a song similar to your topic. So there's something going on there.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your testimony.
Can I go? Give me the green light? Okay. So my name is Raul Rivera. I'm a TLC driver and a TLC driver advocate. We fight for the drivers. I just want to point out to Ms. De La Rosa that in the same fashion that you advocate for yourself to become, to get re-elected, you don't merely tell your constituents to go to the website. Because I just heard what you told the gentleman there. So you don't just say, go to the website. You know, you actually advocate. So in the same fashion, you should advocate for your constituents. Now, I want to bring up the Sugar Daddy. I don't know if anybody knows the Sugar Daddy, but his name is Mark Gordon. He's worth over $2 million. He's the founder of LimeWire, and he settled out of court for $105 million for theft of royalties that belong to the musicians. Nobody mentions Mark Gordon. He is the founder of Open Plans here in New York City, a nonprofit, an NGO, that are trying to monetize our city. And Mr. Gordon gives a lot of money to the council members. I don't know if you guys receive money from him, but this guy is filthy rich. He's up on the Upper West Side, and he's helping transportation alternatives. He's helping Open Plans. He's the current founder and chair to Open Plans, and he's funding all these NGOs to monetize our city. So I think that's something that needs to be said here. If you guys are receiving money from Mark Gordon, I think you should consider giving that money back. I think your constituents should know about it. I think New York should know about it. This guy is nothing, he's just a thief. That's all he is, trying to masquerade as some kind of advocate in the city. He's no advocate. He's actually from New Jersey. He's a disgusting individual, and a lot of people here in the city council support him. I think, I think the council should know about that. If he gave you money, you should give it back. Thank you.
Thank you all who came here to share your thoughts and experiences today. If anyone in chamber wishes to speak but has not yet had the opportunity to do so, raise your hand and fill out an appearance card with a sergeant in our arms in the back. Seeing no hands in the chamber, we will now shift to Zoom testimony.
Yeah, hello. My name is Christopher Leon Johnson. I'm here to support Resolution 066. While at the same time, I think the city council needs to come together and put our speaker, Adriana Deal Adams, on as to be removed from Speaker to City Council because she's completely discriminating against a Jewish elected official named Lynn Scholman and an African-American elected official.
Please stay on topic.
Topic, because you guys are city workers. Remember, you guys work for the city just like we do. Remember this. At the same time, y'all need to remove that speaker lady as a Speaker of City Council. But at the same time, Resolution 66, the members of these unions have to understand, have to understand that, look, there's a lot of election rigging, there's a lot of retaliation that goes on with these unions, especially with the incumbent slates of these unions. They love to weaponize their position and their resources to oppress members of the unions that are against them. I am totally for union organizations of many of these. I, I, I am totally for union organizations of many of the, of the job sites, but I'm, I'm really against, like, Unite Here 100, because they want to unionize in places where they shouldn't be unionized. But at the same time, with these current unions like 3rdBJ, HTC, and DC37, you members have to understand that the unions, the incumbent union slates, the incumbent union slates, they have big advantages when it comes to putting their members over. So I support Resolution 66, but at the same time, the city council needs to come together because they're all city workers, just like, and, and defend and support two of the women, Lynn Shulman and Sabina Brooks-Powers, to keep their spots on the advisory board for the budget. That's, I understand they're supporting the other guy. I can't say his name on this platform, because I know they'll cut me off, but that's wrong. We have the right to support who we want to support. You should not be retaliated against because you're supporting somebody that the speaker doesn't approve of. Like I said, if this could happen to these women, Sabina and Lynn Shulman, this could happen to anybody in the city council.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Okay, we're making final call for Zoom registrants who have not yet spoken. There seems to be no one else on the Zoom. If you're currently on Zoom and wish to speak but have not yet had the opportunity to do so, please use the raise hand function, and our staff will unmute you. Seeing no hands, I would like to note that everyone can submit written testimonies to testimony@council.nyc.gov within 72 hours of this hearing. We thank the administration and the public for attending this hearing to share your thoughts on the oversight topic and attached legislation. We look forward to following up on this, on these issues. With that, this hearing is now adjourned.